Is everybody ready? All right. Looks like we're on the air. Meeting call to order. This is the January 25th, 2025, for our Oakland council meeting. At this time, would the clerk read the statement of compliance?
This meeting is being held in accordance with the open public meetings law duly announced, advertised, and posted in the municipal buildings. The meeting will adjourn at 10:00 PM unless the majority of the council members that are present vote to extend the time.
Thank you. All rise from the pledge of allegiance. Councilwoman Pignotelli, would you lead us in pledge of allegiance?
Yes, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you stay standing for just a moment, for a moment of silence? Thank you. You see. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Kamala?
Present.
Councilman McCann?
Here.
Councilwoman Pignotelli?
Here.
Councilwoman Rose?
Here.
Councilman Salianni?
Here.
Councilman Slusinski?
Here.
Councilman Talamini?
Here.
Okay, now that we've called the roll, we have a special presentation today. We've got some students here from Manitoba. And before we bring them up, and Ms. Boomhauer, her teacher, I just want to just make a quick statement and realize, you know, these young ladies, all these students are being honored here at the council meeting. You know, a lot of times, we bring up a lot of sports teams and everything else like that. It's the first time we're bringing academics up here. And I think it's important to honor these individuals because Oakland is, Oakland, with all the schools and everything else, are one community to really, and this is what really makes Oakland great. Valley Middle, I'm sorry, Valley Middle. So, right now, we have the students of Valley Middle School, sixth grade gifted and talented class participated in the fall 2024 Thinking Cap Bowl Quiz. Students took an online computer test of 100 multiple choice questions. Areas covered included math, geography, government, sports, spelling, science, literature, English, history, general information, and fun trivia. It is a team activity with all the participants around one computer. Points are awarded based on how fast they answer and as well as their accuracy. The sixth graders from Oakland, New Jersey won first place in the country. But this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Boomhauer to come forward with the students. Ms. Boomhauer, would you want to just explain to the audience and the residents what this program was all about and how you got involved with it?
Sure.
And the camera's right there.
Okay. So, well, during COVID, I was looking for quiz competitions online because we weren't allowed to travel. I came across this one and thought this would be right up our alley. The students actually started practicing back in the fall. And as I said, they answer questions on a variety of topics. And then we figure out who's best at certain topics. And we also have a keyboardist who has the pressure job of having to quickly click on the answer without getting yelled at too much by everyone else. But last year, this group actually came fourth in the country, and they were trying hard to top that. And we were actually a little surprised when we got the announcement that they won first. But they're a diverse group of students who have different strengths, and they were able to really show off for us.
Can I press me, how many schools participated during this?
Around 100.
Okay.
Throughout, overall, over the country.
Terrific.
Yes.
Well, thank you so much for that. Well, let's get the certificates.
Okay.
Jillian Sheen. Congratulations. Next, we have Aliyah Santini. Did I say that right? How do you say your name?
Aliyah Santani.
Aliyah Santani, congratulations. Good job. I should have opened these ahead of time. Kershaw Kapoor. Kayla Ules. Timothy, how do you say his last name?
Dovadian.
Timothy Dovadian, congratulations. Jackson DeLone, DeLeon. He's not here?
I'll take it for him. Thank you.
Leo Beck. And last but not least, Samuel Cohen. Is everybody in the same grade or is this?
Yeah, they're all sixth graders.
They're all sixth graders?
Yes.
Everyone want to come in for a picture? Everybody squish in.
Yay!
All set? Let's give them all one more round of applause. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. But if you're a--
Facebook with the mayor?
Yes.
Good job.
Oakland is very proud of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Then we'll take a quick one-minute break if you guys want to leave.
I have something for Brendan, who's going to give you access while leaving early. It's the key.
Can we pitch a review? Sure. You can stay there. Will you sit down? There you go. I only have two pieces here. One is I attended the recreation wrestling tournament last weekend. I'm not sure how many towns they had there, but they had the lower gym, the upper gym, and it was really a truly pretty incredible experience. And I think it ran all day. So that was a wonderful, wonderful event to attend. And also, I just want to acknowledge the fact that yesterday was the swearing-in of our new president of the United States. It was a wonderful day, just watching the ceremony across the board. And it was a nice transfer of power. And I think it's, you know, it happens every four, eight years, and I hope everybody just takes a moment and realizes, you know, what a lucky and fortunate country we live in at this time. And with that, we're moving up to the election of the council president. Do I have a motion for some?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Councilman McCann.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Actually, we'll just do it on favor.
Aye.
Ever?
Aye.
Aye.
We're good? Congratulations, Council President McCann.
Thank you.
At this point, we have appointment of council liaison as council president.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to report the committee assignments per the borough bylaws. There are six committees in our town, and I'll read the committees' names. And then, in the first name of the council person that I state will be the chair of the committee. First is Public Works, Pat Pigletelli and Russ Talamini will be the member. Finance is Kevin Slusinski and Steve Salianni. Administration is myself and Kevin Slusinski. Land use is Russ Talamini and Carol Ann Rose. Public Safety is Steve Salianni and John McCann. Water and Sewer is Carol Ann Rose and Pat Pigletelli. I just want to make sure that it says Rose and not Ross. The committee assignments are as follow. Arts Committee is Carol Ann Rose. Access for All, Carol Ann Rose. Board of Health, Pat Pigletelli. Communications Commission, Steve Slusinski and Steve Salianni, I'm sorry, Community and Public Events, Steve Salianni. Emergency Management, John McCann. Environmental Commission, Pat Pigletelli. Flood Commission, Steve Salianni. Historic Preservation, Steve Salianni. Library, Kevin Slusinski. Local and Regional Schools, Russ Talamini. Municipal Alliance, John McCann. Recreation Commission, Russ Talamini. Senior Citizens, Pat Pigletelli. Sustainable Oakland Green Team, Kevin Slusinski. Shade Tree Commission, Carol Ann Rose. That should do it.
Thank you, Council President. At this point, do I have a motion to open the public?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody from the public wish to address the council? Not seeing anybody, do a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
This time, we have the approval of minutes. We have the approval of minutes of January 7th, 2025.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Roll call. Does anybody have any changes or corrections? Not seeing any? Roll call.
Council President McCann?
Abstained.
Councilwoman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slusinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
We have several Raffle licenses. I'll read them out. We'll do as a consent. I got authorized Raffle license RL 1529 for Indiana High School PAC for a 50-50 on February 28th, 2025, to support the athletic programs at the Knights of Columbus 7 for a court, Oakland, New Jersey. The second one is authorized Raffle license RL 1530 for the Oakland PBA number 164 Civic Association for a poker night on January 25th for the support of local families and organizations at the American Legion 65 Oak Street, Oakland, New Jersey, 07436. Next one is authorized social affairs permit for the Oakland PBA 164 Civic Association for Poker Night on January 25th, 2025, to support local families, organizations at the American Legion 65 Oak Street. Next one is authorized Raffle license RL 1531 for the Oakland Rebuilding Together North Jersey for a 50-50 on June 9th, 2025, to support the rehabilitation of homes in Bergen and Passaic County, low-income homeowners rebuilding together at 341 Ramapo Valley Road, Oakland, New Jersey. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we have some appointments. First, for the Arts Commission, I have Natasha Navid-Hohen. She's going to be a member, one-year term. I've got April L. Mansfield for a one-year term, Amyr Eiler for a one-year term, Peter Markelis for a one-year term, Brenda Wallace for a one-year term, Joyce Anne DeLisandro for a one-year term, and Teresa DiSimone for a one-year term. Do I have a motion from the council to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second? On favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next one I have is for Public Events. This is for mayor and council. For Jerry Ungelmeyer for a three-year term expiring in 2027. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor? Aye. Next one, I have Communications for Michelle Rosa Reibek, Alternate One expiring in 2027. This is for mayor and council. A motion approved.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
The next, the mayor appointments for Green Team, I appoint Brian LaForsia. And for Access of All, I'm appointing Ashley Barrett for a one-year term. That's all I have for now. Okay, moving on to the resolutions.
Mayor, before we do that, I think we skipped Lenar's request?
Yes.
Which one?
Lenar.
Lenar's request to continue working Saturdays.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. Thank you. Okay, wait. Once again, as we spoke about it a couple meetings ago, it was the decision of the council to bring it up monthly to allow Lenar to work. Once again, they are now requesting to work in February for Saturdays in February. Do I have any discussion on this from the council?
Have we had any complaints? Has it been going well? Has it been, you know?
My office has not received any complaints. I haven't heard of anybody else receiving any as well. I don't know if any of you have heard from residents about it.
I've heard a lot from residents. You were at the Boy Scout, one of the residents of the Boy Scout, Eric, when we were together, brought up the noise.
Anybody else?
Do you have a complaint?
Yeah, verbal discussion.
No further discussion? Does anybody wish to make a motion to allow Lenar to work Saturdays in the month of February?
Make a motion?
Second.
I'll make a motion, sure.
Got a second from Mr. McCann? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
All right, let's do a roll call. Wendy?
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pignotelli?
No.
Councilman Salianni?
No.
Councilman Slusinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Okay, so we've given Lenar permission to work on Saturdays for the month of February. This will be coming--
And I assume that that carries the same condition with it as the prior approvals, work hours between 9:00 and 4:00, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the resolutions. This is a consent agenda. Before we do that, I just want to pull out 2573 and 2574. We're going to carry those for the next meeting.
Mayor, I have a request to pull out some other ones as well.
Who do you have?
2555.
2555?
Yeah. 2556.
56?
2557.
57?
2563.
63?
2566.
66?
2571.
2571. Anything else?
Nope.
That's it. All right, so I'm going to read the ones that we have not pulled out. We have 2558 Authorized Contract for Tax Appeal Attorney. We have 25 Memorial Izo. 2559 Authorized Contract for Bond Counsel. 2560 Authorized Contract with Borough Engineer. 2561 Authorized Contract with Water and Sewer Engineer. 2562 Authorized Contract for the Borough Auditor. 2564 Authorized Contract for Risk Management, Property and Liability. 2565 Authorized Contract Risk Manager Health Benefits. 2567 Authorized Contract Public Defender. 2568 Authorized Contract Integra Tax Appeal. 2569 Authorized Contract Affordable Housing Administrative Agent of Housing Rehabilitation Program. 2570 Authorized Grant Summit to Bergen Municipal Employees Benefits Fund for the 2025 Wellness Program. 2572 Authorized Hire Temporary Water Sewer Clerk. 2575 Authorized ACO Vapor Recovery System. 2576 Authorized Contract Vapor Recovery System Upgrade. 2577 Authorized Tax Refund ProCap 811 LLC. 2578 Appoint Environmental Commission Secretary. 2579 Authorized Tax Assessment Contract Civil Solutions. And 2580 Authorized Reassessment Program Services Contract Appraisal Systems. Do I have a motion to approve the following resolutions?
Want me to read the mail, the numbers? Or no?
No, we just did it.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council President McCann?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slusinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
All right, circling back to 2555 Authorized Contract for Borough Attorney. We have 2556 Authorized Contract for Affordable Housing Attorney. 2557 Authorized Contract for Labor Attorney. 2563 Authorized Contract for Borough Planner. 2566 Authorized Contract for Borough Prosecutor. 2571 Award Contract to Cleary Jacoby Alfredi Jacobs LLC for Water and Sewer Special Counsel. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? Not seeing it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council President McCann?
Abstained.
Councilwoman Pignotelli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rose?
Yes.
Councilman Salianni?
Yes.
Councilman Slusinski?
Yes.
Councilman Talamini?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to ordinance. We have none. Work session, Mr. Coons, recreation fees.
Thank you. So, this is to address a few items that the Rec Committee, you know, would like to see handled here in the early part of the year. Didn't quite make it in for the end of the year when we did the general fee adjustment ordinance. So, there's a few different elements to this. One, the committee has been working on a formalizing their refund policy. And we provided a copy of that in the packet. It establishes firm dates for refund requests for each of the sport seasons. It also exempts from refund certain sports programs where money is used to buy personalized gear that cannot be returned or reused somewhere else. That's sort of the nuts and the bolts of it. The second part is, as we, even though it's very, very cold now right now, we're already thinking about spring and the upcoming reopening of the tennis courts and pickleball courts. And we'd like to adjust the fees for tennis badges for the use of the facility. It's been some number of years, I can't remember the last time it was, that we adjusted that. Currently, the fees are $25 for a resident, $50 for a non-resident. And that's fairly typical, by the way, if you look at other towns, 2X or more upcharge for non-residents. We offer a senior discount of $20, and anybody under 18 years is free. Rec Committee is proposing $40 per resident, $80 for a non-resident, $30 for seniors. And children under 18 would remain free of charge. And then lastly, there were a number of small program adjustments for some of the sport clinic programs as well. Some information came in again after we did the ordinance in December that we would just like to get in place before we open up registrations for those programs. And if anybody has any questions, Mike happens to be here, and I'm sure he'd be more than happy to provide you with additional information.
Does anybody have questions for the council?
Are you happy?
Yeah.
I just want to add, you know, the commission, they go through the whole thing. They did a lot of work. They realized that the cancellation, you know, when the people want their money, the refund policy, it was getting a little hectic, and we needed it to be a little more codified. And then the personalized stuff, we're paying for things that we can't take back because it has the kid's name on it. So, and then the people want refunds, and so we're making heavily prorated kind of refunds and things like that. And then the tennis fees and even all the fees, the committee goes through a big process and just going through what they think is fair for the town and what happens in other towns around us. And we're just trying to keep the rec fees, you know, reasonable, but also within the scope of other areas in town, so, neighboring towns. So, and just thank you to Mike and the rest of the committee.
Any further discussion? Not seeing any? Mr. Coons, would you have to draw up the resolution for next meeting?
It'll be ordinance.
An ordinance, yep.
Yep.
Okay. All right, anybody have any new business? Not seeing any. Anybody have any old business? Not seeing any. Since we don't have committees, I don't believe we have any council committee liaison reports. Somebody has something.
Yeah, I actually did attend the OCC meeting just, I think you asked me to, Mayor. And the reorganization, Ryan Schwarzer is president. They put their schedule out, their next meeting will be March 13th, I believe. And they are, so that's where they met.
I have some.
Councilwoman Pignotelli?
Yes. Board of Health is going to meet this Tuesday, January 27th, at 6:30 in the basement of the library. Unfortunately, the last senior citizen meeting, I could not attend. I had a doctor's appointment. Environmental Commission, we met and they discussed the noxious weed ordinance, goals for 2025. Members are going to bring their thoughts to the next meeting. Briefly discussed town cleanup for this year, participation. Also, a brief discussion on open space. And a brief discussion on a deer ordinance. I know many, or some of us have been approached by residents about destruction to their ornamentals, et cetera, on their property. Mawa does have an ordinance that does permit culling. They're going to take a look at that also. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to add to my report. I forgot. The OCC is working on an app, an Oakland TV app, and that's in a trial mode.
I'm sorry?
OCC is working on Oakland TV app.
Okay.
Let me just, to remind everyone, there's baseball and softball signups for rec, and don't miss the cutoffs. The dates are a hard cutoff.